By the God, we look to you this morning. We're thankful and remind for our country the freedoms we enjoy to go to and throw. We pray you would today grant us wisdom and direction as we make decisions for constituents. We do pray for those that are in law enforcement, those first responders. We pray for their safety. There you can watch over them. So today, we ask your blessing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review those? And can we have a motion to approve those as written?
Motion to approve.
Second.
One favor, right?
Aye.
Three, zero. We had payroll totaling $266,392.67 and claims totaling $1,206,392.77.
Motion for the finances. Second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Total inmates in jail as of this morning, 82. Thirty-two are pre-trial Superior, 24 pre-trial Circuit, 10 F6, and 7 VOC. The only thing I have here, I handed out an annual jail report. You can read through that, statistics and such for the jail, updates on programs and services offered, and staffing, which is, we hand this out every year. So you can read through that. If you've got any questions, you can let me know. Construction's still in full swing. They made some pretty good progress in the masonry work the last couple of weeks. We do have a construction meeting this afternoon, kind of get an update. Just talking to Connor, they should be finishing most of that and starting to take the scaffolding down this week and going from there. So again, things are in full swing, and I'll get more of an update this afternoon for outlook for the next two weeks of what we'll be dealing with there. So other than that, I don't have anything else. If you've got any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I missed the last meeting with our event that was taking place. I just wanted to let all the emergency personnel know, great job working with us in case we needed any emergency, and hopefully we fulfilled what their needs were. We got our stockpile of salt back. We were having issues with our supplier for a little bit, but kind of learned their game, and we don't have an issue with that any longer. We did borrow two loads of salt from the state that we'll be repaying here this week. We got weather coming in, it looks again Thursday, and we're prepared. We have, we've been having minor issues with the trucks, so we made up a list, checklist on all the trucks and on our downtime when it's either too cold or too wet or to do anything. We've been combing over the trucks with a fine tooth comb, fixing any little issue, so we don't have them during any events. The guys did a really great job. It's the first storm I've had with them. There's some tweaking maybe here and there, and we got some things that we can look forward to, but I think that they're a really good team, so I want to give them credit for what they did. We've been out brush cutting, making sure we can get line of sights. That's our main line of work right now with the weather the way it is so wet. I want to remind everybody to be careful with the gravel roads. It's frozen underneath, and when they thaw on top for a short period of time, they become slick, all the fines come up. It's not nothing we can really address right now. We'll take care of emergency areas when needed, but it's not cost effective to go through and do them now, or it's not even capable to grade right now. So we had some complaints on those.
And with that, I guess we'll bring Connor up to give an update on the highway garage.
I just want to note that during that snow event, you know, you get a lot of, being beat up a little bit about not going to red, but that's because of the crews. Our roads were nice. I was in Huntington County, I was in Adams County, I was in Blackford. It was night and day, getting off our roads, knowing where the boundary was. Our roads, they weren't perfect, but they looked great, they were passable. I think Scott and those guys seen the same thing, so tell everybody we appreciate that for sure.
Thank you. Sure, we'll. Morning, guys.
Hey, how you doing?
How's it going? A quick update on where we are on the highway garage. Last week, we had a progress meeting with the whole team, and we're able to nail down, we're about 90% of the way there on the floor plan layout. We had enough information to go ahead and complete our side of the design on the pre-engineered metal building, and I suspect that this afternoon, we should have the specification for that returned to us from PCI. And with that in hand, we should be able to advertise for bids for the pre-engineered metal building package and steel erection. So in the next week or so, it kind of depends on that advertising, when we can advertise versus when it ends up in the paper. So I'm not exactly sure what the bid date will be yet, but we're in the home stretch here.
I'm getting down March 8th is our next policy meeting on that Sunday?
Yes.
Will we know permission by then, do you think? Maybe, maybe not?
It'll probably be the week after that that we would be receiving bids, because we have to advertise twice, and I think it's two weeks from the first advertisement. So it's just a timing thing.
Thanks.
Yep. You guys have any questions?
Can we go out for concrete, too, for the building?
No, foundation design won't be ready, because we don't have the building reactions yet. All right? Thank you, guys.
Nate?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of different items here. First one was Bridge 403. We received bids on February 8th for Milestone, Judy Excavating, and RG Zachary's Construction. Our low bid was from Judy Excavating for $327,353.10. I'm recommending approval of that agreement. The low bid is below the engineer's estimate in our CCMG grant, which was targeted at $355,201. So we'll save, we'll save 25% of that because of the way the grant language works, so 75-25, so you can work the math on the difference. There's copies of the bid tabs were published, and I think I've got a copy of them there in your packet as well, so you can kind of see the breakdown. Pretty close bids on it. This one is targeted because of the way Judy wrote theirs. It won't be, we gave an option for an extension, so if they wanted to do it over the next winter into the spring of 2023, Judy did not opt for that option. That was one that another bidder did attempt, and that's where they're going to close those numbers in. So this one would be completed by November of this year. So it'd be a summer construction project for us.
Motion to accept. Judy? Second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Next item here is the Murray Stormwater Project. That's one of our Indiana Finance Authority grants that we receive. They're stormwater infrastructure projects. Project is currently out for bid. We've got some local and regional interest as far as contractors. It would encourage county excavating contractors to look at this. It is really just a stormwater and paving job. I'd like to see them look at the project. The bid opening would be on March 3rd, so there's not a lot of time to get in on this, but it is a pretty straightforward project. It's just stormwater infrastructure there for Murray. So I'd like to see more local contractors go after it. It's out there publicly. Because of the grant and because there is Labor Standards Administration on this project, it's, we got to comply with the Davis Bacon laws, so there's wage rates we got to meet. I'm recommending that we work with NERC to do the Labor Standards Administration for the project. I have a proposal from NERC for not to exceed $10,000 to do that administration. So they would do all the necessary hearings, they would do the investigations to make sure that the wage rates are meeting those standards for us. Essentially covers the county from any liability. Matt Vonderen, I believe, is the one to be administering that. Matt Vonderen's worked with the county on other federal projects of that type.
And your findings is that number a fair number based on the dollars to be in the project?
Yes, and I'm gonna, I need to finalize the agreement with Indiana Finance Authority. So we've got language that says we're going to pay a certain dollar amount as a percentage of the project. This agreement, the consulting engineering agreement, all of that was supposed to be split with the, with the IFI. And so we're paying, we're paying front so that we don't have to finalize, sign the agreement until the end. So really, what we're doing is we're paying down our portion early on, and then I'm going to ask that the state pays a larger portion on the reimbursements when we go to construction. So once we know where the bids are at, we're going to know where the final breakdown is. We've got a ceiling with the state as far as their matches, so until I get the bids in, I'm not, I can't be certain where that is. But these pieces, I want to pay 100% local. That way, I don't have to go to the state for reimbursement on any of those items. That'll simplify a lot of our paperwork when we get to the project. But I feel that that number's going to be reasonable. It's straight time it is not to exceed, so we're not going to get charged anything that they don't have directly to us.
So is that percentage reasonable? $10,000 as a percentage of the total?
Yeah, it's a million dollar project. So that's our, that's our kind of rough number at this point, unless a contractor will give us a better deal on it, hopefully.
Motion to approve is written.
I'll second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Nate, how much lower, just estimating, did you come in on this?
Well, we're about 20, not 20, about $18,000 under the engineer's estimate, and then in this on Bridge 403, yeah. So that was about where we are. So it, 18, so $0.4 thousand that we're going to save on it. And considering this market right now, NDOT's been bidding projects, and they're not able to give them out. I mean, I think the, in their January letting, they, well, they went out for projects, and they had none under their engineer's estimate, so they couldn't award anything directly. So I count ourselves fortunate that we're still under an engineer's estimate right now on these projects. Hopefully, we can, the market will cool off a little bit, so I can get some good numbers. I don't like to just inflate estimates arbitrarily, but based on this market, I'm going to have to start bumping numbers up. And when you're forecasting jobs two and three years in advance, that's tough. I think we're pretty fortunate to be there.
Especially with the matching money that need to come from us and the budgets and everything else.
The risk is with the, with the market, if we, if we miss, then we end up covering 100% of the overage versus the percentage of the overage. So we don't want to be, we don't want to be short.
No.
So, no. Good question. County Home Road and 200 South at Federal Lead Project, public hearing was advertised last week. Public hearing for that project is scheduled for March 9th at the Public Library. Public comments would proceed from that period until March 24th, when that period will close. I got copies, a copy of the documents here with me, but they're also at the Public Library and available on the county website for review.
So at the top, what time?
That one be, there's actually going to be an informational meeting beforehand, so we're just going to be open for comments and questions. When it comes to the hearing, it'll be, it's a hearing, so really, it's, here's the information project, and then we want to hear from the public. That's what it's for. And then, once that's done, then we can stay until the library closes at 8:00. So they'll kick us out about 10 till.
John, what time is that?
I think we'll be, I'll be there about 5:00, but I think the hearing will start at 6:00. So anybody's got questions, wants to kind of converse, they can come in anytime during that period.
Thank you.
Liberty Center, 300 West. I know there's been a lot of county concern on the condition of the road surface, free stall. It's really been rough out there. I've driven it and inspected. I know the commissioners, you've received calls. I've spoken with the Lewis Brown, with the sewer district, VTF, and their group. Both the county and VTF have been doing regular maintenance on that. I know it's certainly not making everybody satisfied with where that's at. I know I'm not satisfied with it. We're looking to have some slow signs installed by the contractor to make sure that people are kind of warned as the transition when you get into town. But I'd also like to stress that, I mean, as we start going through the season, there's really not any permanent pavement solution that can be put down in this season. Asphalt plants aren't going to open for about two more months, maybe longer, depending on what happens. So I'm hoping April, but it may be the first of May before we can get a permanent pavement on. If we're not satisfied with it, the alternative we would have would be to close portions of that road, which is not what anybody wants to see. So.
Is there a way to, I was thinking about this, because I was out there several times, but north-south on 300, can you put a sign that says not through traffic or?
The problem is, it's just so difficult to please. That's been the dilemma. As soon as it's open, they'll drive around the barricades. They've driven through the barricades. The complaints we received from the church parking lot is when it was closed, people were driving on the local detour and beating up their yard. It's just, it's very, and it's only showing up on the north-south because of the truck traffic. Now thankfully, VTF went out there with a crew yesterday and did some work. I haven't gone out there to see how that looked yet, just because of the meetings today. I want to go look at it myself. I'll talk to Lewis Brown, see how we, how we like it. Unfortunately, just throwing more stone in the potholes just means more loose gravel, and then it creates bigger washboards, and so it's even bigger ruts. We really need to go in there, they need to dig a part of that up and then pack that back in place. We've got to treat it like a gravel, gravel road. It's going to be rough, but I think the problem is, is we are leaving it open, because it's been the request of the public and the businesses in the area. They want to have that access, and that's important. It's just, unfortunately, we need everybody to be mindful that it's, it's rough.
We've got to go slow.
We got to go slow. It is a temporary surface for a reason, and it's a bad season for it. So no, we're not, nobody's being ignored. It's just, that's kind of the dilemma we have. So we're planning on leaving it open at this point, just kind of warning signs. If at any time you decide that you want to do something more extreme as far as closing traffic off, let me know. If it becomes unsafe, we may have to make an emergency decision at that point.
Watch and see what happens with this vault and then going into the snow and the cycle coming again.
The cycle and our regular maintenance, all those things just pile up. So, but no, certainly. I wanted to at least make sure I brought that up today. Utility permits, I've got two permit requests. One is from DLZ on behalf of the city of Bluffton. I'm recommending approval on this application. It's for a sanitary sewer project and force main to serve the Timber Ridge Country Club Estates addition. So it'll be the gravity sewer to the pump station, and the other part of it is the force main over to their, to the city. And the other one is for the RC. That's a consultant for AEP. I'm recommending approval on that. It's for aerial fiber installation on their poles. It's just any of their work above or below ground would require permit. And we've got both the applications there. I'm recommending approval on both permits.
Well, I'd ask you for the maps.
Yeah, and you would have gotten their permit.
This map was sent to Jared at the surveyor's office.
Yes.
It just got there Friday afternoon, so.
Yeah, I got this one, was my copy was waiting for me when I got here, but I did, I think I did send you the sketch plans, and both of the, there's color maps that are included with the permit as well for it.
If you've seen them, reviewed them, are okay with them?
Yeah. The force main is very minimal. The, looking at their plan as far as inside the Timber Ridge area, it's going to tear up a lot of the road there, but they've got a full-depth aggregate backfill under the pavement, and then they're going to have, trying to remember the pavement section that they're going to have, but it's going to probably exceed what's actually there in place anyway.
So Sean, being here, do you anticipate a total chip and seal redo for everything after it's finished? Have you even reviewed that at all?
On?
Timber Ridge and the Gulf Coast area?
I have not reviewed it.
Okay. It might at some point need?
We'll have to look at our schedule. I don't think we did that. We didn't do it this last year.
When would they be able to start on?
I was going to say, when is the start stop?
They've got their funding, so once they've got this permit, I think they're going to give notice to proceed. So that's construction 22.
I don't want to create another issue.
Yeah, we want to follow up and get it done immediately.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at our chip seal schedule for this year and see if we've, what we can do to kind of move that forward if we want to do a single seal pass through.
Do one and then do the next one, spring 24.
I should have that scheduled next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. I'll make a motion to accept that.
Is any of that wrapped up in the developer's costs?
Well, they'll be paving. It just would be, if we do any chip seal, it would only just be to cover up any of the joints between it, because they'll do partial pavement. So you'll have lanes that they'll create. So they'll be bringing asphalt up. The reason to chip seal over it would be to cover those joints and then create a uniform surface.
If I recall, that area got chipped and sealed maybe about four or five years ago, with my direction.
Yeah, I just have to look at the calendar. We got maps back at the office. We got to look.
We normally do it about every five to six years.
Yeah, so, so if it's been four or five years, it's probably very close to what it would fall in.
Sounds good. I'll make a motion. Second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And then just a note here for any right-of-way dedications. I don't have any that came in as far as minor subs.
Received quite a few this morning here.
Ah, all right.
Mentioned to accept all the right-of-ways.
No motion on the floor for accepting right-of-ways? Accepting right-of-ways. You have a motion on the floor to accept right-of-ways. One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Appreciate it. Any other questions for me?
Nate, just, you presented some of these, the AI contract, and you're asking the commissioners to sign them. We're waiting on them to give us their signatures, and you'd still like them to sign today, and I can, I can hold it or send it back to them. Because you've heard from them that they're going to execute it as it is, right?
Yep. So they had signed their bid. I've got their payment and performance forms are in place. It's just a procedural issue with their front office. I didn't get their signed copy of the agreement. That was one of the pages that was, was missing. So with, with your approval, even if you didn't want to sign it today with that Bridge 403, as long as you're authorized to sign it at a later date, if you wanted to wait for their signed and authorized copy, we could do that as well. So, because they're, they're bound to that, that price. It's just simply a procedural issue. I'd prefer not to sign something that they haven't, but in this case, I was hoping to have something for them.
And it's for Judy, right?
Yep, Judy Excavating. And I could double check that. It might be in my email. I just, I'd have to check my email.
I have no issues. I'll make that motion.
Second. One favor, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Appreciate that. Is there anyone here representing the Health Department today?
I don't see anybody. I followed it. We're still red, but we'll be going to orange very shortly. And our numbers are dropping. Everybody's numbers are dropping. I think Adams County's lowest and the state, we're pretty close to lowest in the state, and we're, we're getting down there. I would say we'll go to orange, if not yellow possibly.
Good.
I would like to see if we can get a meeting with that group, just to, we've had so many changes.
Right.
So that next meeting they have, we should.
Have they updated? Because they, what's, one schedule and canceled for the Health Department?
That's what I heard.
No, we heard that, and we're not sure why. Something about RSVP, but it should be a standing meeting every other month regardless.
Oh, yeah. So if you find out, if they, if they just took off the, we're not having a meeting with the Health Department.
We heard they canceled. Not sure why.
Let us know when it's rescheduled.
Something about RSVP. I have enough people RSVP. There should be a standing meeting regardless.
How are you all doing today?
Good, sir.
Good. I've just got a couple of quick items, and this is the idea of the projects we've got going on the first half of the year here. I know you're going to be discussing later in the meeting the remote work policy.
Give them orders?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I've got a call, sir. And I'm asking Tina, who is my DOC compliance person, retired at the end of December and is coming back tomorrow part-time. So I'm asking her to have some permission to follow the new policy after it's set, and let her do some of these projects. Our number crunching, data crunching. We've got our SWOT analysis we do every spring. We've got the grant coming up that we're preparing for in March through April, so we're ahead, and we can have that all for submission. Hopefully, DOC stayed at the timetable it did last year, which looks to be the situation. And, you know, these are just ongoing training issues where she does all the department training for the carried guides and bits with the staff. A lot of this is preparatory work that she shares in her office with me, and I think Mike and Blake have been in, and Colin have been in, Lisa, too. And I'm in there doing phone calls and stuff to get her disruptive, for her to focus and get those numbers crunched and everything cross dotted and double checked. So I would ask that the commissioners give me consideration guidance on letting her doing this under the new policy. It's going to be decided, I believe, by the end of the meeting.
Yeah, you haven't seen it, so you don't know what we're going to approve.
I'm not sure what you're going to approve.
I believe that, just based on what I'm seeing, it might be, you might have to make multiple requests, because I think, maybe you want to bring that up, Mike, right now?
I'm, I'm trying to discuss it right now.
The only thing I see is, this appears to be ongoing, and ours is kind of time defined.
Right.
So I can picture being granted and then come to work.
She'll be in the office one to two days a week. She's only working up to 28 hours a week total. She's going to be in one to two days a week, one day's for training staff, or weekly training requirements that we have for DOC guidelines. So, and, you know, I'm just trying to get everything organized for the year, so to say, because we're getting ready to go into our busy season with the grant prep. DOC's, legislature finally finishing up in probably the end of March. We'll know more what we have going on in July for switchovers, for updates with new statute changes, things like that. We'll have to train staff on that. So, you know, I'm trying to get ahead of the curve here.
Is there any, any room to move her to a different office? Because, to be honest with you, I struggle with putting a new policy in. In day one, we have an exception to the policy.
Right. And that's kind of why I'm bringing that up, because it's pandemic, ours, our policy, I believe, is pandemic related.
It's, it's a little bit broader than that, but it's for health or wellness issues. That's, that's the essence of what it's about.
Just to rework. So that's.
I'd say we table this one until we get the policy in place, and then have a chance to understand more about what's going on here.
Right.
And see what our options are. If this is our only option, then we consider it. If there's other options, then.
And I did share Jeff with Mike and Blake before the meeting. My administrative assistant informed me a day that she's giving her two weeks' notice. I'm losing her to better pay, better benefits, and three days remote working. It's getting tough to find skilled people to do skilled jobs for governmental entities. I'm trying to stay competitive. Tina's been in assistant 20-plus years. She's been with me over 10 years. She's DOC trained and tested. I'm trying to retain that knowledge, because she's got a PhD, and that is one of the few things in counties that you see that somebody's willing to still contribute and work. And so, you know, I'm trying to not have to incur any additional. We were able to taper from full-time to part-time, so I could give money back to the council last year in budgets. I'm eliminating some part-time positions this year, so that I can keep things under control, because right now, trying to hire hard time, I'm not price competitive. And so I'm. And so, I'm, I'm trying to do everything that we've been doing and new requirements with fewer people. So this would help me be able to maintain my operational readiness and status with the state.
I think we have to pass the policy and revisit this on.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for consideration guidance on that. Also, the other, last month, we had to cut a check for 51 cents on a refund for overpayment. The county doesn't have a per se policy about the refund levels, what the minimum is. I talked to Colin about it, talked to Lisa about it. I'm here asking for you gentlemen to discuss and look at it going forward. We spent a lot of money for 51 cent check between Lisa's office and my office. It just doesn't seem cost effective. So that was something I asked that the commissioners start investigating and looking at, because I was all shocked that we really didn't have a county policy on that. Surely we can't be the only ones faced that. And it'd be nice to have a clear, across-the-board process. I know the sheriff uses unclaimed funds from the state of Indiana. Everyone's got different things to do on it, so.
I'll check with some of our neighboring counties and commissioners and policies that they've got. Technically, we're accountable for every penny's taxpayer dollars.
Yeah.
So, you know, kind of, that's what we have to look at, but I'll, I'll investigate.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's, it's just something that after Lisa and I were talking about it, it was kind of like, oh, no, we really don't.
Well, then it depends on what you're refunding yourself.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's fees.
These are fender fees from people. We have random drug strains that we do up to the end of their sentence. So we never know what the final payoff is exactly, because they could get a random drug test between last check-in and the end, and coming off program that week. So if they come up on the call-in for a drug test, they've still got to do it. We can't waive it.
I think, my, I think the general feeling is we, you know, or we have someone's money in an account somewhere. We've got to get it back to them somehow. So I'd be, I would be very interested in seeing some other procedures or other ways of possibly getting anything to them that might not cost the county so much money, but we need to figure that out.
Yeah, and I, I just bring it up as, it's something that we've never really thought about.
It's a good thing to discuss. We'll get something put together, but I would definitely like some feedback too, so.
Thank you so much, Sean. Do you have any questions for me?
I do not. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Appreciate it. Monthly reports?
First on our list is the weather closing ordinance or inclement weather ordinance. And Colin can explain it if he'd like.
Please.
Sure, this was distributed. For those out there, there, there are emergency provisions that we have. The, the ordinance that had been passed about emergency weather-related matters where we need to shut the courthouse down, we need to shut down county services so that employees would be either asked to leave or stay home. It needed, I think it needed some significant reworking. It says, talks about weather broadly, but then only allows the commissioners to send people home in the event of a snow emergency. Well, we also have tornadoes and floods and those sorts of things, so we need to expand that. And there are situations, however, where, as, as happened a week or so, a few weeks ago, with the way that the media and the weather service was handling this, you know, everyone went to work thinking that they were going to be buried up to their neck in snow, and it really, it really wasn't that bad. It was bad enough. There, there were some, some minor accidents. There was no personal injury accidents, my understanding, like the highway department did a great job. And we're in contact with the sheriff's department as well, making sure their operations are moving, moving along. So, absence declaring an emergency, as these situations happen rapidly, sometimes we have to react quickly, and it might mean a phone call by a department head to one of the commissioners. What, my, my employees are scared. They want to leave because this snowpocalypse is about to happen, and we don't have the time to put together formal ordinances or to get this done. And it takes some work, and also individuals may be remote. We may have a hard time signing them. So we, I, what I did is I drafted an ordinance that would amend the handbook and also put in place ordinance that, it falls on the commissioner president here, that if he is, if people are calling him and he can't declare this emergency right there, he's able to say, you know what, we're going to, we're going to send people home or tell people that they can stay home. It's significantly limited. It can't last for more than 24 hours. An individual would have to come back at their next shift or the next day, whatever it may be. If that needs to be extended, it can be extended and by either the commissioner or by the, by the commissioners as a whole. There's also a provision in the old ordinance that allows even Lisa to, to sign an emergency declaration. But we found ourselves in this very slim gray area that probably will happen once in a generation here. The employees and Wells County employees, and I'm one of them, will always be concerned, well, if it's dangerous and I have to go home, but I'm being told by my department head to make the decision, am I getting paid for that? Am I taking comp time? Is that a vacation time? And what, in drafting this and assuming approval here, the employees will no longer be in fear that they're not going to get paid or they're going to lose vacation time when they're being by authorities outside of them. We had every county around us declare emergencies, and we're hearing it on the media. They're no longer concerned so long as the commissioner president has indicated either orally or in writing to the department heads that they're, they're free to leave. So it empowers him, it empowers the president, whoever he may be, in this case, Mr. Vanover, to make that call so that employees are safe and, and they know that they're, they're compensated appropriately for their time.
Make the motion to accept that.
All favor, right?
Aye.
Please, sir.
What is that ordinance though?
2022-03.
Alright, the temporary remote work policy. You have some good comments on that?
Well, we've gone through this a few times, and Mr. Poindexter brings up some of the issues that, that we're going to run into. The policy as it's drafted right now, that we've, we've been working through, would limit the ability of an individual to temporarily work remotely if there's a health or wellness issue related to that individual or the individual's immediate family. Another, a secondary concern that you don't think about as much is, has been, at least for the commissioners and me as county attorney, comes down to accurate tracking and oversight of individuals who are working at home. And so what we've done is we've crafted an ordinance and amendment to the employee handbook that would cover where, that those situations where if an individual has a health or wellness issue, they go to their department head. That, a form is filled out. That'll be, that'll be a part of the, the recorded document. It will then go to the department head. The department head approves it, then it's submitted to the commissioners for their review. There's a limited amount of reasons for it. I believe that there's inconsistent practice within the county on remote working at present. We had this pandemic that happened. People were working remotely, and now some of it's hung on a little bit. Some places are back to, back to normal where everyone's working in sight. But the, the goal obviously would be to have people working in their department at their work site as much as possible unless there's a significant exception. And the exception that we've developed is a health or wellness issue. That may need to be changed. We, we have issues that have been brought up here. I believe there's language in that handbook amendment that does require the department head to implement policies and procedures to make sure that the person's working to avoid ghost employment issues. And this is a compromise in consistency to make sure that we're at least allowing some individuals to work from home, but making sure that we're avoiding ghost employment issues. I, I believe the amendment to the handbook that I submitted recently covers all of that. With the concerns brought up with Mr. Poindexter, perhaps we want to revisit it and not vote on that, but that'd be your decision for the commissioners.
I think with Mr. Poindexter brought up, that maybe that should be a job description change that we, that job, maybe the job description is that there's some remote to that, so it's not an exception to this. It's actually bid that way. That person bids on that job knowing that there's some remoteness there, and if there's other jobs that come up. But I don't think we use this policy with exceptions going forward. So if, if you have a job like that, it makes sense and it, it works for the county. We can track them. And there might be others. I don't know, especially in today's workforce. I have people that work remote in my businesses. But I post those jobs that way, and that's the job you bid on. That's the job you accept, instead of using this policy as an exception to every job. So I think that just opens a can of worms, not just on how we track. Are people effective? But I think there could be some discrimination cases that come up against that. Why'd you let this person do it, not me? Things like that. So I think it should be, if you have a job that needs to be remote, then you post that job, bid that job, grant that job that way. But it still has to come through the commissioners about how many jobs, because we don't want every job to be remote.
Correct.
But we have to have some control of that. I don't want an exception to put a policy in today and tomorrow we have an exception to the policy. It makes no sense.
Agree. I'd like the motion to accept the temporary work policy as presented.
I second that with the notion that we're not going to make any exceptions. So if you have a, you have a job, then it needs to be posted as such.
That's something you could do a term.
Oh, yeah.
Question on the floor?
Second?
Three, zero. Is there an ordinance number for that?
That, we already had that ordinance, and it's just the handbook.
Okay, good. Unsold, unsold property certificate?
If I may.
Any luck with that? White Lake Street property?
Yeah, it's been a lot of fun. It's such a nice piece of property that we're dealing with. I did receive a call from a man named Sean Stinson, who owns a real estate holding company that owns an adjacent property that really is the, the dominant parcel there, if I can use that term for that garage. He asked about certificate sale, and I said, well, we already went through this. Why didn't you bid? And he said, well, I live in Allen County, and in Allen County, they've got a whole different procedure. And he kind of detailed that. And having been a former resident of Allen County, I'm not surprised at how complicated and busy the process was. But he thought he had a lot more time to, to handle that. He indicated to me that if we held a certificate sale, that he would be a bidder on, in that. Right now, if we assume that property, all of the past property taxes would essentially be waived, we have the rights of purchaser right now. We're still in a redemption period. We would own that property and we'd have to sell it at some point in the future and go through an entire process of selling property to the public, which is an added complication. There's nothing we can't handle, but it's an added complication. And it would be time for me to, to work that out. So if we kick it back to another certificate sale, SRI would handle that. That cuts against our costs. There are costs to that, but it would be cheaper than going through a tax deed and then a sale later on. And in addition to that, we, any bid that we receive and approve for that sale is, it cuts against the loss in the property taxes that we've already suffered here. So there would be some recoupment there as well. If he doesn't show up to this one and no one bids on it, then we're back, we're back where we started, back in.
Now, what happens if he doesn't follow through?
Then we're back in another 120-day redemption period. Now, that being said, I have secured waivers by the deeded owners of that property. They disclaim their interest, and those would be valid in the future. We would just have to sit around and wait. I haven't filed anything in that tax sale, so I'm just sitting here not doing anything. So it'd just be time, not, not money that we'd be dealing with at that point. So we would just need to know if the commissioners would like it to submit back to a, a tax sale. I, I, I know who Sean Stinson is. There's another business he owns, and my, my partner does some work on some stuff in Allen County. I'll disclose that, but I, he, he was very eager to receive the property. My, my hope would be that he purchased it, but I, you know, I don't know him all enough to say he's a man of his word and he's willing to put a few thousand dollars towards this.
I guess my question is, is there going to be a dollar minimum? That, we can set a threshold?
Yes.
That's my whole key, because I think based on, don't you have to have back taxes and all that stuff calculated into the amount?
Last time it was $2,000. Last year, when we had it on this property, we set a minimum bid of $2,000.
Right, so we can wait and make it a different amount.
Right, you, you set a floor, and, you know, if that comes in at that minimum bid, the county is eating the, the unpaid taxes over, but you're getting something rather than.
Exactly. And enter it back into circulation for a property that's got value or something. I think that's, we've gone into this. Let's move in that direction and recoup something.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All favor, right?
Aye.
Three, zero. Review meeting times. Commissioner?
Yep, so I've got, especially since the snow thing, I think this started my first commissioners meeting. Started getting calls, but I've got quite a few now about, we're not accessible. We're the only group that meets during the day. And I get reasons why. I mean, we have all these county employees that meet with us, but have a request, at least move one, if not both, meetings to a night. So five, starting at five to eight or something like that, at least one meeting a month that way and one during the day. We're moving both to the night. So I just brought that up. It's for conversation.
I can speak for myself. I had that issue when I started as a commissioner, and we introduced the voice to stream our services. I've actually never had a request after that. But, I mean, I'm not saying against it. A lot of my scheduling I do upfront, so I basically plan the year out and everything around that, but, I mean, I'd be open to maybe change that for 2023. That's kind of what I'm looking at, but I'm right open.
My only question is, all the department heads and everything else, how we, you know, how that works, how that plays out. I, I don't have a problem with.
I mean, you have to come to the county.
I think it's a good idea, but.
And, you know, you guys would have to schedule the time when you're not working, the schedule to work, and then how will that adjust your shifts internally? Like I said, I, I normally make my schedule ahead of time, but maybe is that something you want to consider and bring back at a later time, get feedback?
The other one that came up in those same conversations is the Health Department
meeting being at six or 6:15.
At 6:30 a.m., yeah.
People are saying that's just, they're afraid that it's set at that time, so people won't attend. So that's the feedback. And that's the feedback I'm getting about this one is, and I'm, I'm not going to tell you the group, but it's mainly one group, but it's a big group of people saying, you guys aren't accessible. We'd like to see at least half of them be accessible. So we don't have to decide it now, but just put that on the agenda of, I told them I'd give a response.
Do you want to float that then on the next meeting and give us a chance to explore with some of the other department heads and put together plans? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that works.
I'm okay with that.
Just ask for feedback from the department heads.
Right, yeah, please.
Well, we have a employee meeting, what day, in March?
March 9.
9. So we could bring it up, and if we can't address it at the first meeting, it definitely could be other second meeting in March.
Must tend to be thrown on the agenda though, in case we get ahead of that.
What about public? I mean, that's who's asking. That's what much heads, but any public response to?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Public response is always welcome. Alright, clears us up.
I had a courthouse request.
Please.
The Wells County Child Protection Team would like to put, hang a banner across the third floor of the courthouse, as well as put yard signs in the grassy areas of the courthouse for Child Abuse Awareness Month, which is in April.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All favor, right?
Aye.
Please, sir.
That's all I have.
Colin? Traffic cameras? Are the bridge camera?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Alright, there, there had been a request to, and there were, there's a lot of public comment about. comment about the use of traffic cameras, and there's significant concern on the commissioner's part regarding privacy, the rights of citizens. That always has to be weighed against protection of property and, you know, personal injury. So there's there's some law enforcement consideration, but there's also deep concern for creeping feeling of a nanny state or something like that, what have you. And so an ordinance was drafted here. We have one set of cameras on the the bridge. Is it Bridge 193?
193.
193.
193.
193.
300 West of the Walrus.
Right, it's on 300 West. And there were cameras that were set up there to really more for safety, sorry, to protect the property more than anything and against vandalism or accidents or something like that. So what the commissioners had asked me to do and what I've put together here is that, and I don't have a problem just reading to you what what we're saying here, that is, the commissioners have considered the competing concerns of county property protection and the threat of governmental gathering of private individual data through clandestine photography and video. The Wells County commissioners are committed to protecting individual privacy and are furthermore aware of the threat of intrusive government action into the private lives of citizens of of Wells County. So what we've done is we've crafted an ordinance that states that the information gathered from those cameras, whatever they may be, you know, it could be birds flying by, it could be cars, are not it's not something that we would just disseminate immediately out to the public. And authorization for release of that information would be subject to commissioner approval, and they will only approve that for issues of major concern. That would be property damage issues, personal injury issues, or felonies that may have been committed. You know, I've got somebody driving through town and outrunning Scott in his police commission. And so we've limited the scope of what we're utilizing it for, and we're ensuring that the public knows that it's it's a big concern when we have these the surveillance state. It's it's out there. It's in other places. You see it happening everywhere. And hearing from the commissioners, want to ensure that the citizens of the county know that we're aware of that, and we won't put up with that sort of incursion into your ordinary life.
Yeah, this all kind of started because of a, you know, just a frequent damage to a $10 million asset that we have sitting out on 300 West.
Twice.
Right, which you're on the hook for fixing.
Yeah, yeah. The taxpayers had to pay twice to get it repaired and brought back up to standards. So it's definitely protection for property and.
Extended closures and.
All the stuff that goes in with it. Just, yeah. So we have plan orders in place that that information is not available unless.
Just got a question about that bridge. So it's pre my time, but the bridge got hit. We knew the people that fixed the equipment that hit it. Is that correct?
No.
I thought me and you talked, you said you knew who had repaired the equipment and had had ideas of who hit it, but.
No, I'm I'm sure whoever fixed it knows. I'm sure there's probably about there's probably five or six people in Walrus County or the surrounding area that that are going to take that secret to their grave. So.
I'm misunderstanding. I thought you said.
No, I don't. I don't know who it is, or we have the evidence. It's in the report that was put together, but no one no one came up. But since we've had the cameras up, even when the hydraulics touches it, they're calling the next day telling us, oh, I I didn't really hit the bridge, but it's just this hydraulic hose, and I'll come visit you. So it has we had people hitting it, taking paint off of it before, and they'd be like, what? It's just paint. And I'm like, you're taking a 15-foot tall piece of equipment down the road, hitting the bridge, and you're telling it to go stick it.
That's historic, right? There's there's.
You have anything about that bridge.
You can't just take that.
Put a newer bridge up. That's.
No, this is far as it lasts. So it is in a programmatic agreement with with the state and county government. So if we were to do go through and try to replace it, even if we could just write the check and change it, it would kick us out of all federal aid for a period of time. So.
So it's not that we can't do this. If we do, then we're.
Yeah.
The price tax deed.
The financial the financial burden would be significant.
Yeah, you guys are free to do that. I hear the ramifications.
Yeah. So I would I would very much recommend against doing such a thing.
The worry about the camera is a creep, right?
What's that?
The worry about the camera is a creep. You put a camera up there now, and we all agree that this is how we're going to handle it. We're not all going to be here forever. So the next thing is that I've had this in my hometown. They they put it up, and then pretty soon you have a speed camera on it, and then pretty soon you have people within organizations that say, I want to follow this person. And that's that's what we're trying to.
That's what we definitely want.
In that vein, if I can add, in this ordinance, I didn't say this earlier, this is not just effective for that camera, for those cameras. If if 10 years from now, Wells County wants to put in more cameras, it has to comply with this provision, or the commissioners would have to be public about rescinding this and instituting another policy. So there's an added protection.
And the way the cameras are set up now, they're paid through your King Bridge Fund. It's the highway department cameras. They're not a police camera. It's not something that's coming out of Scott's budget. So it's not it's a very different animal, you know, apples and oranges, I guess, by comparison for the public. There's there's some benefits for us as far as for responses in snow emergencies. You don't have to necessarily drive out there to look at what the weather is. We can look and see what the weather is out there. But certainly, the mitigating factor was the recurring damages and strikes. And it was happening so often, even minor, that when we did have a major strike, it it certainly sets back for a year plus. So we don't want to see that done. And because of just about any bridge, I would consider it on another high restricted bridge in the future, but it's not in a sort of traveled area. So but certainly, I think people's protections and privacy. I know I have access to that because as your county engineer, but I've got I've got responsibilities to you as a commissioner, as I answer to you. So certainly, nobody's going to see me putting pictures of what access I have. That'd be a big mistake on my part. So, but nope.
And we have signage out there, you know, indicating that fact and.
Absolutely. No, the decisions that went on over the years were to proceed with a series of deterrents, which is why you've got the lights, you've got the signage, you've got that gantry, and then the camera so that we can go through and do enforcement after the fact. So it doesn't stop someone from striking it, but at least now we have some chance because the assumption was that we could just find out whoever did it. But that wasn't the case. So this is our this is our best effort to try and keep from doing that versus putting a rigid gate in place, which opened up all sorts of additional liabilities because then we'd be creating crashes. So, no, appreciate it. No, I want to come up just so you can hear my answer.
Thank you. So we're going to approve that.
Make the motion. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second. One favor, say aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
And that is ordinance 2022-04.
Anything else? Anyone up here want to add?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
One favor, aye?